From San Diego Police Department.
Hi, good evening to everyone. Not too much tonight. I just wanted to check in with everyone. I know that you all have a very super busy schedule tonight. So I just wanted to check in and saying that we're super excited about the Miramesa Street Fair that's coming back and we will be there and hope to see everyone. And I'm just here if anyone has any questions for me this evening.
Christine, I have a question. Three days ago, there was an accident on Camino Santa Fe. Was that a suicide that happened there? I mean, that really looked like that was done on purpose?
You know, I didn't hear about that one. We border with Northwestern when we get to Camino Santa Fe. What did you said three days ago? So Friday?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look at the day. If you didn't hear about it, then don't worry about it.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, no worries. I can look it up and then I could reach out to Barry Loder now.
It happened at six thirty in the morning. It was, hold on a second.
I believe that was the one was Camino Santa Fe at in the tech area.
Yeah, it was on the seventh.
Yeah, on the seventh. Okay, yeah, I will look into that.
Last Wednesday, really sad.
Well, I'm just going to put a plug in rather than ask a question. I've been having a lot of meetings with Northeastern. On some of the issues going on, particularly the rogue car shows that are popping up. And you have no idea the hard work going on behind the scenes on those. And I just want to make sure everybody knows that. Northeastern Division, particularly in SDPD, all teaming up together are making inroads. And when they can tell us more about it, they will. But I know that pops up a lot on social media, people asking, isn't anything being done? And I can tell you firsthand, it is, and we're very thankful.
Yeah, we are very thankful for you, Barry, for all the hard work and getting us in the meeting with everyone that needs to be contacted. So we do appreciate it. Takes teamwork. And I think we're doing a great job in.
So no more questions. We'll go ahead and move on. I don't see anyone. If someone's here from the fire department, please let me know that you're here. Okay, hearing nothing. President's report, I will defer till we get through some of the more important business. I will just ask for an approval of the August minutes. They have been posted online. If I hear no corrections or objections, we will just by affirmation, accept them as written. Okay, hearing nothing will accept the minutes as posted at the website. We're going to move on to the first program of the night. As I hope you all heard, the epicenter is going to be redone. It's going to become, it's being called the Miramesa Epicenter Teen and Community Center. And this is going to be a project of the County of San Diego. They have signed an agreement with the city and they will be renovating and operating the building. So tonight we have Alexa Wright, the Park Project Manager for the County of San Diego Parks and Recreation. And with her are Emily Hubbard and Brandon Schroder. So Alyssa, I am going to turn it over to you. Let you tell us what's going on and how we can add our voices and give you the information you're looking for.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Alyssa Way. And I am a Park Project Manager with the County of San Diego Parks and Recreation Department. I am also joined with Emily Hubbard and Brandon Schroder, who are also from the Parks and Recreation Department. We are here to provide an update on the Miramesa Epicenter project and happy to answer any questions you have. To provide some background on the project, Epicenter has been vacant since two thousand sixteen, except for one of the building's wings, which is occupied by the City of San Diego's police volunteers. And the past, the building has served many purposes, including a library and a community center. The parks, the county's Parks and Recreation Staff had identified Miramesa as a target community for the teen programming. And that that could support by the county's Safe Destination Nights, also known as SD Nights Program, which provides recreational opportunities for teens. The county is hoping to seize this opportunity for teen programming as in and as in a long term agreement with the city for the eight thousand square foot property. Programs and events that could be implemented at the epicenter may include school and career counseling, intergenerational programs in collaboration with the senior center, a gardening, cooking, or sustainable food system program, health and fitness classes, art and music programs, a safe daily drop-in facility for teens, outdoor adventures, and collaborative events with neighboring high school and the community. So what's next for the epicenter? The county is currently in the planning and outreach phase for the project and will soon transition to the design phase for this facility. We are reaching out to project stakeholders and to gather their input on the project and is why we are speaking with you all tonight. Earlier this year, a survey was sent out to the local high school, which we collected responses for. And a similar survey will be mailed out to over sixteen thousand residences and businesses in the surrounding community at the end of the week to collect additional information on recreational amenities and programs at the epicenter. After the county collects initial feedback from the community, we will work with our design consultants on developing a concept plan to present at our community meeting, which will be planned for the beginning of November. That being said, county staff will like to gain any feedback that you have on the epicenter and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. I know I'll start with a question. We have some of the representatives from RSVP here. And we have had the police storefront there for many years. It is our hope that that could remain there. Is that being considered?
Yes, that is being talked about with the City of San Diego and is considered in our long term agreement.
Anyone has questions, just jump right in.
So here's one. So are you, are you coordinating with the high school, the high school principal and user of the facility?
Yeah, so throughout this outreach process, we've been in communication with various stakeholders, including the high school. And plan on reaching out with to them further to get them involved with the the public community meeting that will happen in November. But yes, there was a survey that was sent out, I believe, at the beginning of the year prior to me joining the county, in which we gathered information from the high school students on potential recreational programs and amenities that they would like to see at the epicenter.
I just want to reinforce what Barry said. We definitely need the police storefront there. And anything that we can do to help these kids so that they stay out of trouble before they get over to Miramar College. But I mean, it's real key. It's right across the street from the high school. And kids at that age don't have anywhere to go. Other than they get run away from everything because they're just sitting around watching stuff. And we definitely need a place for them to go where they can just hang out and do their homework, whatever. But we want to make sure it's not too structured so that nobody wants to be there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that statement. That's definitely something to keep in mind as we plan for this and definitely want to make this a teen centered facility.
One more question. What what kind of repairs are needed on it? And how long is that going to take? What kind of renovation are you doing to the building?
And that's a good question. Like I said, we haven't really gotten too much into the design phase. There was a facility condition assessment completed for for the building, which addressed issues of repair. And as we get further into the project, we'll determine the project schedule. Will include the construction phase and that will determine the extent of repairs needed and the overall project timeline. So hopefully I can give you a better answer once we have that public meeting.
Earlier, you mentioned that you'll be sending out a survey to the community the end of this week to about sixteen thousand stakeholders. All right, that's a lot of the folks around the community. I believe we're at twenty five thousand households. For those who may not get a survey who live in this target area, how might they send in suggestions? Complete a copy of that survey if they don't receive one in the mail.
Yeah, so we do plan on reaching out to residences and businesses within a mile radius of the epicenter. So that's essentially like a one mile buffer. And we plan on having a survey link on the parks development plans webpage. And people can also access a survey via QR code if they see any flyer that's been distributed throughout the county, the city. And we'll have some hard copy surveys available at the library and rec center and just various community centers around the epicenter.
I do have one more suggestion. Please let them know they can do whatever they want to that building to make it usable, including removing the building and starting over. So don't don't half ass this thing. Please make it usable so that it's something that's worth it to the community.
Yes, thank you for that comment. Yeah, that's that's our intention. We want to make this a usable space, not just for teens, but for the community as a whole.
And are you anticipating programming just on weekdays or all seven days a week?
Um, that hasn't been officially determined yet, but we do plan on having programming throughout the weeks. Like I said, we would have some various events, also collaborate with the community on events, which I imagine don't always happen on weekdays. Also during the summer, we know that teens aren't in school during the summer, so that's an important key aspect of the of the epicenter is to keep that facility open as much as possible for students. They have more information to come on what specific programming the epicenter will have and hopefully have that facility open to be the most useful.
If I can elaborate a little bit on that one?
Yes, go ahead, Brandon.
It's more of an operational kind of question, which is my role. I'm the manager on the operations side of the department. And I think we will, well, one, one of the questions we're asking in that survey that'll go out, or that had, the first round again went, was pushed out through the schools. And Mr. Sabans was really helpful in pushing that out through the schools, through the high school and other schools in Miramesa. So that was focused on school input, students, teachers, parents. But it'll be the same kind of questions in the next round of surveys. One of those questions is what hours, weekday morning, weekday evening, weekend mornings, weekend evenings, when are you most likely to use it? So that is taken into consideration when we're determining the operating hours. And in all these, the input we get from these surveys right now will really help us in our initial way, the way we set up the operation of it. But that's a continuous process for us too, you know, with as time goes on and we're in there. Doing, you know, if it's the after, if we're busy after school and no one shows up, or if we open up on the weekends for things and no one's coming in, then maybe we adjust. We see probably some special events that would probably take place on weekends. But yeah, I also think that's a continuous evaluation.
I see Dorothy has her hand up.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, do you think you'd be having some music concerts there that will be open for to sell tickets to anyone? Or only teens or anyone?
You know, I anticipate, well, I don't anticipate it being what it was just before it closed down. I would anticipate probably having some kind of music or some something there, but not not necessarily a independently run concert venue with late night shows and bands and people from all over. Whatever kind of music programs or things take place there would probably be, it'd be more with our rec center staff involvement and leadership and some other partners in that. But I don't know that it would be a concert venue where we're someone else is selling tickets.
Maybe a concert once in a while, not just a regular concert venue, but once in a while, a music concert?
I mean, I think we'd have some kind of, I mean, obviously what we're trying to avoid is any crazy shows where sometimes you is the right way to say it. Some of the things that sometimes can come along with that are the drug use in the parking lots or fights and things like that. We want to keep that kind of activity. We want to make it a safe and enjoyable yet safe place for the community. So, yeah, I think we, I'm not ruling out any kind of concerts. We want to have something like that there. And I think the design will incorporate the ability to have some type of concert performance or something like that there.
Brandon, it's Marv Miles. We have had that undesirable element before when we had concerts, so we are all in favor of you ensuring that we don't run into that again. So.
And again, we don't have a drawing prepared yet. You know, we'll have a concept here before too long, but this will include exterior improvements too. So lighting, security, sightlines, you know, landscaping to to try to make sure that interior and exterior is included and
Just just to let you know that the Miramesa Scripps Ranch RSVP Foundation, we pay for all the exterior maintenance. We pay for a person that does all that, just trimmed eighteen palm trees out in front. So we have been taking care of that for a long time. So just let you make a note on that. We want it to look
RSVP does that?
The foundation, it's the, we have an ink, so not not the patrol members, but it's many of the people that you see up here, we pay for that. So. So just to let you know, we, you know, it's whatever we can work together, it's fine. We just want it to look nice. And so it's been maintained for that way for years.
Yeah, we'll have to, we should, we should talk more about how that all comes together.
Yeah, Mar, please, please send Brandon your email address. Mar is your best contact for that. I see Pam has her hand up.
Yeah, question for Brandon about target audience of teens, because I can remember when it was in operation before. There are sometimes different desires from the older teens from the high school, the younger teens from both middle schools. And that's something you're probably aware of and are planning to take into account. But I just thought I I asked and, you know, do you have a age range to rattle off that is going to be your target age that you're reaching out to?
I'd say most likely if we run it with a similar model as we have our other teen centers, which I anticipate will do, the target age range would be ten to eighteen.
Okay.
And then based on, again, who's who's there, who's showing up, who's coming in and participating in the services offered. You know, we engage with the people that are there and what they're interested in and adjust, you know, based on that. And try to get, you know, I forgot to mention earlier, but I think even outside of hours of operation for the teens, you know, programs themselves. We anticipate probably having some time available for reservation of the facility for a private event or a public meetings, you know, those kind of things. But the the comment and Joe, I think it was you, I can't remember, that talked about the structure, not not having it too structured. I think there should probably be a good mix of that. And that's something I think we try to do in our other teen centers. Is it's available, like an after school drop in, come and go as you please. It's there as a safe and enjoyable place for teens to to come and congregate. And there there'll be programs and we talked about different tutoring or gardening, you know, a number of different things. We're going to offer all kinds of different programs. They're generally you can participate or not if you want. They're usually at no cost to the kids involved. So I think it'll be a mix of both structured and unstructured. Just kind of following up on that last part of it.
I know you mentioned reaching out up to age eighteen. I'd like to suggest you reach out to Miramar College, which is just a little bit away from the facility at I fifteen. Their president, Wes Lundberg, is on this call with us. And they have a number of programs that can overlap into the high school age. One I'm familiar with right off is the rec program where they have started working with high school age students. And I think that would be a great benefit to the high school to build that link to the community college and some of those programs.
Thank you for that recommendation. We'll definitely do that.
I can drop, I'll put my email in the chat box and you can reach out to me and we can talk about that more if you'd like.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Just have Brandon give me his email address to chat box.
Yeah, I'll put my email in the chat here in just a minute.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, I know some of the answers to the questions, you know, we had the one about why, you know, fix the outside, even if that means to take it down. And we've explored that. And then we had that conversation and might actually be more expensive than repairing what's there. A lot of things going on. We're going to be carrying whatever message you all bring in as far as getting the community involved. So please be sure to let us know when there will be public meetings, access to the surveys. And we're going to be very happy to put that message out there and help get everyone in the community involved. And we truly appreciate what you're going to be doing with the epicenter. It started many years ago, once it was not our library, with a very similar goal. It was to serve our teens and did so for many years until such time as it kind of fell out of favor with the teens, you know, for reasons we can't always understand. And I think it's time to have that again. And we're so looking forward to having you do not only that, but also create a community space, which we have never had in Miramesa. That will be very helpful. We're very appreciative to the county for doing this.
I do have one more suggestion. They need to get rid of those damn eucalyptus trees that are on the property before you do anything else to that building. They continue, they're just hazardous and they should not be around kids. I will cut them down if you if you get it okay.
All right, Alyssa, Emily, Brandon, thank you so much for being here tonight. We're looking forward to this. I know we're looking about two years out when the building goes online. Hopefully, that's, you know, the shorter end, I know. And we'd like to invite you to come back at any time when you have updates, you're looking for information from the community. Be more than happy to have you on the agenda again.
Thank you so much. And thank you so much for all the questions and support. And yeah, we're also very excited about this project and looking forward to collaborating more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our candidates are going to start at seven forty-five promptly due to time commitments. So we're going to jump ahead, do a little bit of our government and community resources. And right at seven forty-five, we're going to cut that off and come back and bring in our two candidates. So right now, I'd like to ask Jeff Stevens, the Chair of the Miramesa Community Planning Group, to talk with us about what's going on. We're at a very important point in that process.
Yes, we are. So can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the draft Miramesa Community Plan update is out. You can find links on the town council website not only the the draft community plan, but the EIR that is now available. And and also a zoning map. All those things have only been out for about a week. They've been, of course, in progress. We've been discussing various aspects of it at our meetings for two years now. But what I'm showing here is what the city is proposing. It's kind of an odd plan in a lot of ways because it could bring in a lot of housing. Twenty four thousand units will be the the upper bound on it. And where that would go is in all of the shopping center areas along Miramesa Boulevard, along Miramar Road and in Surrano Mesa. All of these would be redesignated as mixed use facilities where they could have Surrano Mesa housing and industrial together. And in the shopping areas, commercial and residential. The densities are quite high.
Yeah.
They are over here. In the shopping areas, they're fifty fours up to seventy-three units per acre.
Jesus.
Costume review is about forty-two units per acre. In the, in the, in Surrano Mesa, they have what they're calling urban employment villages. This one area here in the center, because they thought it might be a transit hub, actually has is zoned for up to a hundred and nine units per acre. Now, what's odd about this is obviously this would have a big impact. The EIR does in fact do a pretty good job of describing what the impacts are. For the first time, we have a schools analysis in it. It shows that if all this is built, it would add about two thousand to four thousand new high school students. But the other side of the coin is, if you look at the density limits, you notice this is is not this urban employment village isn't a hundred and nine, zero to a hundred and nine. So no one has to do any of this. This is the city's concept of what they would like to see. They're required to add more housing capacity to the the San Diego region, and this is their way of doing that. Whether this gets built or not is entirely up to the property owners. So far, none of them have come to us and said, we love this idea. So one of the problems with this as a plan is we really don't know what if any of this will actually get built. That's a big difference from our last community plan, the one we did in nineteen ninety-two. I actually worked on that one also. I've been around that long. And in that one, we were working with the developers. They told us what they wanted to build. We then could do a good population estimate. We could plan public facilities. And if you look at the community plan, the adopted community plan today, the community looks very much like what's in there. This one, I have no idea if it looked like this. It may, it may look more like our current community plan. Anyway, this is going forward. I think there's virtually no chance the city will not approve it, no matter what we say about it. But we need to make sure that they understand, know what the issues are. You know, how we will get the infrastructure for this if it's, if it does happen. You know, some other things in the, you should read, the EIR is long. I know they're not the most exciting thing to read, but it says, for example, that there is enough water for everyone. The cities, the county has actually done quite a good job of getting water resources, but the pipes are not adequate. The sewer and the water pipes are not adequate to handle this this kind of load. So all this stuff is in the EIR and they're in there as significant unmitigated impacts. And at this point, the city is not not addressing them. And at this point, the city is not not addressing them. And so that's that's what's going on. We'll form a subcommittee at the planning group meeting to come up with a recommendation on this. And then it'll come to planning group. We'll hear it next week, of course, when the city brings this to us. But it'll come to planning group for a recommendation in October. Then it'll go to planning commission and the city council and will most likely be approved before the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Jeff, I basically talked with Brett Furenstein this afternoon. Made sure he was up to speed on this. And so I did send him the plan. So he hasn't read it yet, a hundred and sixty-four pages, whatever. So just let you know, we're trying to reach out to people, let them be aware of what would impact, especially housing in Target Center and things like that. So anyways, just let you know that we're trying to make sure he is up to speed too.
Appreciate that. I've talked to Brett a couple of times too. I also talked to the owner of the market center. You know, he told me basically they're not going to do anything west of Westview Parkway, but that the area to the east of there might redevelop. Where the theater is and and the other stores. But that Home Depot is not going anywhere and that whole section is nothing's going to happen.
There are a couple of questions. Alexa Kaplan.
Hi, I put it in the chat, but I was wondering if the city had ever decided how like how many stories the different or how high they can build up to reach those densities?
You know, I haven't. I haven't seen that in either the plan or the EIR. Maybe that densities at this at this level, they're not that concerned about it, but as far as I know, they they don't have a well, I shouldn't I shouldn't say that. There could there could be within the zoning a high limit. And that'd be a question for our planners. I don't actually know.
Okay, I just was curious because seven up to seventy-three units per acre, whatever the density that that high seems like they wouldn't be able to achieve that unless they were going higher than the Casamere View is already. And that seems pretty tall. So I was just curious.
Yeah, I would expect five or six stories.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had. I see Min Van has a comment in chat. Did you want to speak or you just want me to read that?
Hi, I was just wondering, so there is essentially nothing that we can do to stop that many residential units from being built because it seems like an awful lot.
It does seem like an awful lot. I guess, sure, you can. You know, you can take your your opinions to the planning department, the planning commission, the city council. I've done that without much effect, I have to say. I think the ultimately is up to the property owners. And as I, as I said, I really don't know how many, how much of this is actually real and how much is just a planning department fantasy. So time will tell.
Okay. Michelle Madrid Nova.
Hi, everyone. I was just curious who would who would fund or who would be responsible for the infrastructure costs?
So the city is ultimately responsible for it. They charge developers a development impact fee for every unit. Now, until recently, the developer impact fees all stayed within the community. So since our last community plan was built, all our public facilities have been built through the facilities benefits assessment, which were developer fees that went into a community specific pot. And then when enough money accumulated, they would they would get built. And that was a huge boom for this community over the last thirty years. But in within the last two years, they have now eliminated that program. All developer fees now go downtown where the city council will decide what they want to do with them. So there's no longer a guarantee that the developer fees will come back to this community.
Jeff, I have a question. I'm going to ask you to bring the map up again for a moment. Something you said earlier has me has prompted a question.
Yeah.
Okay, just waiting to see it. There we go. Okay. You'd already talked about the mall areas. We see the purple and the purple stripe. And that the projected residential there would be from, for example, zero to fifty-four in the purple areas, zero to seventy-three in the purple striping, which means it could be nothing built or up to that maximum limit. One area that we have not talked much about. If you take a look at the two senior mobile home parks, it appears from this diagram that they are being re-designated as residential high. But that one has a minimum of forty-five to seventy-three. What do we know about that? Have they already made the intention with the owners that they're going to redevelop that to a minimum of forty-five per acre? It just seemed interesting that the others are all that zero to fifty-four. And as you said, that's a a nothing build up to the maximum. That one caught my attention and that's because that's our only designated senior housing in Mira Mesa.
So my guess is they have not, in fact, gotten that kind of agreement from the from the owner. I don't know if they've talked to them or not. I would hope so. But I think I think the difference, the reason it's not zero is that zero is in the areas that are current currently commercial or industrial. And so you kind of have an option of either keeping the commercial and industrial or adding housing to it. But this particular area is residential only. So that would be re-designating the the mobile home park as a higher development.
So that's what they're taking into account there is whatever the current density is of units on the property is is according to this forty-five. But it just it's it's one of those ones that we needed to point out that they are also re-designating that for high occupancy development.
Right. That is, of course, one of the few affordable areas in the community. So that's that's an issue.
All right, Joe has a question. Then we have another one in chat after that.
Yeah, there is another way we can avoid having all these units built. If everybody that currently owns a house, according to the state of California, you can tear down your house and put duplex, two duplexes on each side of your property for four units. And the more people that do that, the less of this extra housing will have to do. So we have the right to destroy our communities before we let the other people come in and do it.
I think he's joking, I hope. But you're right, that is an option based on state.
Yes, I am joking, but that is what the rules are according to the state of California now.
Yep.
Sadly.
All right, I see that Min has another question. Is there any other community in San Diego that has seen this type, let me scroll back up, that has seen this type of redesign of planned land use and density? Or are we the guinea pig?
We are the first, but we are not the only. They are. I guess I should say it is something similar in in Kearney Mesa, but not as intense as this. And that that had a lot of undeveloped land in it already. But they're doing this in every community where they're doing community plans. University City Community Plan Update is just a little bit behind ours. It's much worse. It has in the area around University Town Center, they have residential up to two hundred and fifty units per acre. And this got residential at the up to fifty-four units per acre all through all of the the industrial areas along Long Capo Point Drive, including my own, my own office, actually. So again, I think I think what the city is really doing is they're required by the states to identify places where they can add housing capacity. And so they're throwing all this out and hoping some of it gets built. But again, university is you know, is worse worse than what ours is. Hillcrest is also developing. Similarly, Clermont is at an earlier stage, but it looks like they're doing the same thing there. So I think they're basically going through the entire city, one community at a time and doing this.
And Alexa has a question and then Marv.
I don't have a question. I was just commenting.
Okay, I see that I have interest because we're neighbors. Because I live in a small section between Right H Shop and Center to the left, Post Office to the north, Senior Mobile Homes to the right. You're very concerned about the high densities and height possibilities surrounding on three sides of you.
Yes.
Right. And that goes back to the question earlier. Have they capped a height limit on these developments? So we'll need to find that out. That meeting is next Monday. We can ask that question of the city planners. Marv?
I just want to remind everybody that in Orange County, many of those shopping centers, which are not anymore viable, they've closed down. They have changed a lot of the zoning, a lot of those places, and they're scraping the stores and they're building like crazy. So all I gotta do is do a Google search and they're putting them in hard and as fast as they can get them. So they're paying attention.
Yeah, that I think Orange County is doing a lot of redevelopment of malls that are failing. Unlike Mira Mesa where our malls are booming. Dorothy, do you have your hand up?
No, did I not remove my hand? I had my hand up before. I didn't remove it. Let's see.
All right, thanks. Want to make sure.
Take you down.
Yes, okay.
Under reaction.
All right, I don't see any other hands up. Are there any last questions for Jeff? All right, we will be putting out some notices about the meetings next Monday so that you can attend and hopefully get an opportunity to ask some of these questions of the city planners. Thank you, Jeff. All right, it's seven forty-five, so we are going to jump right into our candidates. As you know, with redistricting every ten years, we have changes in some of our boundaries. We've remained in District Six City Council, but we have had changes in a number of our other levels of government. And this year we will be moving into State Senate District Forty. So tonight we're going to go ahead and introduce you to the two candidates for that office. They'll be on our number ballot. Brian Jones and Joseph Roca. They will be running for this office and we are going to give each of them about five minutes to introduce themselves. And then we will have an opportunity for questions. So I'm just going to run by the order that was on the agenda. So Brian Jones, are you here?
I am here.
Excellent.
You're trying to get my head, trying to get my headphones to work, but I don't know if I'm going to make it happen or not.
All right, well, you go ahead. Take about five minutes, introduce yourself so that we know all about you.
Great. Well, thank you all very much. It's an honor to be with you. Let me get my video working here. Great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. As you may know that because of redistricting, Mira Mesa will be picking new senators next year. You just voted for a senator two years ago. So you're one of the few areas in California that will be voting early for a senator. While some areas of San Diego will be waiting two more years to be voting for a senator. You know, I just want to say it's been an honor of mine to serve in the Senate for the last four years. I've represented what's currently the District Thirty-eight, which shares a little bit of the city of San Diego. I currently represent a little piece of Scripps Ranch, some of Forest Ranch, and a little bit of the city of San Diego in that area. And then this district currently goes all the way from Interstate Eight from Imperial County to Riverside. The new district, which is the Fortieth, which will be your new district, now runs north of fifty-two, east of the Five up to Fallbrook, including the communities of Santee and Lakeside, Ramona, and then all the way up to the county line with Riverside. So the new areas for me are University City, UTC, Mira Mesa, Miramar, the rest of Scripps Ranch, Rancho Bernardo, the rest of Rancho Pinusquitas, Forest Ranch, and the county areas in that area. And then all and then the current areas that I represent, Escondido, San Marcos, up to Riverside. So it's been an honor to serve in the Senate for the last four years there, representing those communities. I'm looking forward to the new communities that I get to represent. I did represent University City and UTC my first term in the Assembly. So I have some familiarity with your with that area, with the city of San Diego area. I have some familiarity with Mira Mesa. We've obviously been spending some more time there this year. I ride my mountain bike quite a bit in Rancho Pinusquitas Park. My wife, when we met, we worked for both worked for Domino's Pizza. She worked at the Mira Mesa store for a little while. And so we don't have a long heritage with Mira Mesa, but we're getting to learn the community and events like this are certainly helpful.
I don't understand this.
I'm currently the Republican Caucus Chair for our caucus in Sacramento. I also have the opportunity, I was appointed by Tony Yakin to be the Republican Presiding Officer of the Senate. So I have the opportunity to be the Presiding Officer occasionally for the Senate. That means I run the floor sessions up in Sacramento. My background, I have three kids, three grown kids, two boys, twenty-seven and twenty-three. My daughter is twenty-five. She's married to a police officer. My son is in it. My oldest son is an engineer. He's school right now. And my wife and I are small business owners. She has interior design business that I help with. And she also owns a small business with her stepdad in health food distribution and grocery distribution. My background is I was on the Santee City Council for ten years. I served in the Assembly for six years professionally. I was in commercial real estate before I went to the Assembly. And I worked in various other businesses and occupations before that. I'm a San Diego State grad, graduated in nineteen ninety-one in the Business Department. And again, looking forward to finding out what's important to you all, learning the issues that are important to Mira Mesa. And I was, I listened to some of the previous discussion on the rezoning and all of that. I know that that is a issue that impacts not just Mira Mesa, but incorporated cities like Escondido, Santee, El Cajon, San Marcos are all struggling with those issues as well.
Excellent. Thank you for the introduction. Ms. Roca? Muted.
I'm muted.
Joseph, you're muted.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Rocha. I am born and raised in California through and through. I was raised in Northern California. My grandparents were Mexican immigrants who worked the fields and factories of Woodland and Davis, which are only a few miles away from the capital. My mother, she raised me until I was seven. She struggled with addiction. She lost me when I was seven, leaving the capital, no less, Sacramento, in a high-speed chase. And frankly, I never really looked back to Sacramento. And now we're only weeks away from voters deciding whether they send me back as Senator. That journey, those sacrifices made by my family, which are very familiar to many of you, is at the core of my platform and would be at the core of my priorities as a legislator. When I was seventeen, I had to leave the home because I came out as gay. And I survived as a dishwasher to get through high school until I joined the Navy. In the Navy, I served two and a half years overseas as a bomb dog handler in the Middle East, conducting explosive detection until I was then discharged from the military for being gay, obviously. It's times have changed, but not so much actually. So a lot of candidates and legislators will tell you, especially now with so many individual rights under attack, that they will fight for your freedoms or they will fight for your rights. I have the track record to prove that. I actually was in the case that ruled the entire policy unconstitutional, the ban on LGBTQ people serving in the service. And I returned to the service because it's really all I've ever cared about is public service. I'm lucky to have made it out of what I was born into. And it's a priority to me that children have a way out, but also a way up. And you'll see that in our platform. I served seven more years as a Marine Corps officer. I got out as a captain and that second part of my military career included a another deployment, this time to Central America, where I was in charge of embassy evacuations in Central America during the global shutdown. And also served as a prosecutor. The the GOP has spent a little bit of money quite lazily attacking me online, saying that I would increase crime or that I that a vote for me would be for crime. My last job was as a Marine Corps prosecutor. So you can imagine it's not very effective. My last job was as a Marine Corps prosecutor, so you can imagine it's not very effective. And also that I would raise your taxes or increase inflation. First, I don't have the power to do that, the inflation part. And as far as taxes go, you can see, I grew up dirt poor. I'm endorsed by twenty labor unions. I am the candidate for workers, educators, and veterans. I'm endorsed by President Pro Tem Tony Atkins, which is quite tremendous, the President of the Senate, and your current Senator. I think that speaks volumes. As well as Planned Parenthood, Vote Fets, and Moms Demand Action. And it would be a great honor of mine to represent not only Miramasa, but Miramar, Marine Corps Air Station. Infrastructure, safety, water, and power seem to be at the core of everything I heard tonight. And that would be at the forefront of what I do in Sacramento if I'm so lucky to be elected. So you can imagine with my background, it is an absolute tremendous honor for me to be here. The purpose of my candidacy is to ensure that that type of opportunity, that American dream, is still accessible to families in California and that they don't feel the need to leave neither our cities, our county, or our state to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roca. What we're gonna do now, if you have a question that we can pose to both candidates, go ahead and put your hand up and I will go back and forth, starting with one, then the other, and let them answer your questions. So I'm asking you to go ahead and put your hands up so that we don't step on each other during the question. All right, first question coming from Matthew.
Hi there, Matthew Raskin, Santee, born and raised. Question for both candidates. Agriculture is quite important in California. We're the lead producers. Climate change has been a bit of an issue. What steps do you think we need to take to ensure that we keep that security for agriculture and keep that vital industry alive in California?
Excellent, we'll start this question with, let's see, is Joseph still here?
I'm here.
Ah, very good, they moved around. So yes, we'll start with you.
Well, I think the first thing they'll teach us in the Marine Corps is that in order to solve a problem, you have to recognize that a problem exists. As you may know, my opponent is a prolific climate change denier. And I'll let him speak to that. But I'm happy and proud to say that surely the science is settled. In fact, and that's something that even conservatives agree on. The Department of Defense ruled or titled climate change as a national security threat. It's such an issue. And of course, here with the biodiversity of our state, that means consequences for our firefighters, our senior citizens who don't have access to AC, and of course, the future of our children. We are a, a district that encompasses rural areas. And so water needs to be a priority, right? Water doesn't just mean diversifying our water sources and ensuring that, that we, the voters and especially our tribes have access to clean and safe water. But it also means reducing carbon emissions, which would reduce the heat, which would preserve the water, right? So all of these things are, are interrelated. So, you know, being aggressive about climate action, being accepting the science on climate change, and actually going to Sacramento, not just to poke fingers at Democrats and blame everybody in Sacramento, but rather to, to sit experts, scientists, of which we have just tremendous intellectual capital in the state with our UC systems. This district does have Cal State University, San Marcos in it, and a bit of UCSD. So to sit those community organizers, community leaders, experts, and scientists at the table and, and draft some solutions, some, some short-term solutions and some long-term solutions.
Thank you, Brian?
Thank you, you know, on that issue, you know, certainly the climate is changing. And we've had quite a few bills this year dealing with very, various different aspects of that. On one particular issue regarding plastic pollution, SB fifty-four by Senator Allen from the LA area, I was the only Republican to vote for that bill because I've done some traveling in, in other countries that are affected by our pollution getting into the oceans. And I know that we need to do a better job here in California of making sure that that plastic doesn't get to the ocean. And if it does get into the ocean, make sure that we have avenues and funding for cleaning it up. Regarding the, the question specific regarding water, a lot of San Diegans don't realize this, but San Diego County, through the County Water Authority, has actually, is the example that the rest of the state is trying to follow. The San Diego County, through the multiple water districts that are members of the Water Authority, have done a great job over the last two decades of expanding our water resources. San Diego County has set the example for the rest of the state on conservation, where we are now credited with forty percent of our water use has, has been dropped due to conservation. We've signed historical agreements with the Imperial Valley Irrigation District to pay farmers for their water, but at the same time encouraging those farmers not to fallow their land because it doesn't do as much good on food costs if we take the farming water and don't have the farming. So we've done a good job with that. The County Water Authority has paid for the relining of the American Canal from Yuma to San Diego, which saved about, I think the number's at forty percent there that we're no longer losing through leakage from the canal. So San Diego's actually setting the example. Now, look, this drought is real. And this little bit of rain that we received over the weekend is no fix to where we're at. Lake Mead and Lake Power at historic low levels, almost emergency levels. While San Diego has currently, we've insulated ourself from the cutbacks that the rest of the state is going to experience, we're gonna have to do our part as well in stepping up and continuing additional conservation and additional ways to move water. And again, regarding infrastructure specifically on the irrigation or on, on the water, I voted for several bills this year, both in policy and in budget, that supported renewing some of the water infrastructure through Central Valley. I supported a budget bill that expands the number of firefighters that will be available throughout the state to fight these fires, get on the fires sooner and find them sooner and put them out sooner in a more safe manner. And then also, more importantly than all of that even, is the fire prevention with having more firefighters and fire professionals available for thinning and backfires and those, and those sorts of firefighting efforts.
Right, thank you. And Matthew, thank you for that question. Jeff?
Yeah, straightforward question for both of you. I'd like to know what your priorities are and what you would most like to accomplish as a straight state Senator.
And Brian, we'll start with you this time.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, since I've been elected to the Legislature from the very beginning, one of my priorities is protecting employers and employees in California. Several of my bills that I've passed and have been signed by Governors Brown and Newsom deal with getting the bureaucratic red tape out of people's way so that they can do their businesses, hire people here in California, people can work here in California. One of the big things that's being pushed now by the different labor unions and plaintiff attorneys is the POGA lawsuits, the Private Attorney General's Act, which is really having a negative impact on a lot of our businesses here in California. It hasn't quite made it to the front line of the headlines yet, but I think in the next, if we don't fix this soon, these POGA lawsuits are gonna be a, a big problem for employers and employees, workers here in California. So we need to fix that. As always, my first priority is to do my very best to keep my constituents safe. As crime has increased over the last several years, I've continued to carry bills and have gotten some through the Public Safety Committee. But we'll continue to work on those bills to make sure that I'm protecting our communities. For example, most recently, I think your community was impacted by this as a sexual, the placement of sexually violent predators. We've been very successful, my staff and I in my district, in preventing those placements and curtailing those placements as best as possible. And we've actually had some success in that. Homelessness, obviously, is a problem. I had a package of bills a couple of years ago. We got one bill onto the Governor's desk this year that's awaiting, awaiting his signature now, dealing with homelessness this year. Inflation and cost of living. I, I'm a budget hawk, if you can, if that's a thing that's applicable at state, at the state level, and making sure and holding our state government accountable on how it's spending its $300 billion budget this year, which includes $100 billion surplus. And of course, education. I'm, I'm a proponent for parents being in charge of their children and their students in public school or private school or charter schools or homeschooling. Whatever parents choose, I think it's the parents' right to have that ability to educate their kids in how they see fit.
Thank you, Joseph?
Well, as you may know, I am first generation community college, college and law school. So education is terribly important to me. And I always highlight community college because I, I would be, I, I look forward to being a champion for them and I wouldn't be here without them. But public school itself is, you know, I relied on for more than my education, more often than not. Sometimes it meant food, sometimes it meant counseling, sometimes it meant healthcare through the nurses. Taking care of these educators and staff is how we take care of our children. And frankly, I, I find it interesting that the Senator would mention public schools, seeing how, one of the few things he has done is chip away at the public schools in his tenure for the sake of private institutions and charter schools. We know that when you pull money away from public schools, you're not, you're not making the system any better. You're actually weakening the public system that most of our children in this state rely on. Prescription drugs, lowering those are incredibly important for my veteran population. Again, I'm a Navy and Marine Corps veteran. And also for our seniors, but really for everybody. I mean, let's talk about insulin, right? We're talking about families who have to ration lifesaving medications for their children, while the Senator, again, has chosen to take six figures from Big Pharma and vote against both this cycle, just this cycle, against reducing prescription drug prices and against California producing its own insulin to just cut these bad actors out of it altogether. Veteran issues are tremendously important to me. We have a huge veteran community in our district. I have some signature ideas. A lot of people talk about, you know, what are you gonna do about this veteran issue or that veteran issue? I like to challenge them and ask them what we're doing about our active-duty service members and their families while they're serving in our communities. And I think that we would see a significant decrease in those issues within the veteran community if we did so. I'm a proponent of free education for our veterans. That would encourage veterans to stay in our state. Only, less than one percent of the population actually serves. We are the fifth largest economy in the world. We don't do nearly enough for our veterans. And there's absolutely no reason that we are not providing a free education when other states like Texas do already. We need to increase and cover the gaps for the healthcare for our veterans. Prioritize spousal hiring, which would reduce this awful statistic that I think we all learned in the last year, that most of the food pantries across the country are located near, in a heat map, near a major military installations. And that's primarily driven by the fact that our junior enlisted service members are running their families as single income. Gun safety is very important to me. Of course, the Senator is endorsed by the NRA with an A-plus rating. He talks about keeping our communities safe, but he has voted thirty times against common sense gun reforms during his tenure. And then, of course, reproductive freedom is on the top of all of our minds. You, it may not affect you directly, but given the decision by Clarence Thomas, we know that it's just the first step in a massive regression in individual freedoms. And of course, we know that the Senator has been one of the loudest, frankly ugliest opponents to choice in the state of California.
Thank you. We have a question came in via chat. What would you do about the homeless situation, especially given the proposed increased densities in our communities? And Joseph, you'll be first.
Thank you. So I'm very public about having been diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder following my original service in the Navy. And one thing that I love to share on the campaign trail is the theory of post-traumatic growth. The idea that those of us who are exposed to trauma can actually emerge from the trauma with better tools and even stronger than we were when we were first exposed to the trauma. I think that that's the mentality with which we have to look at our unhoused brothers and sisters, right? To stop looking at them as broken or as a burden on our, on our community and rather think of the potential and the contribution that they could be to our communities if given the right support system. So what does that support system look like? Well, it has to be housing-based, right? The solution to homelessness is housing. That's not, it's, it's kind of built in the cake there. We need to make sure that this housing is, that there's community input, that, that it takes advantage of green spaces so that we're also bringing, you know, reducing their carbon emissions at the same time, that they have access to wraparound services so that if they do have addiction issues, those can be cared for, that they can get on their feet and, and gain employment. So basically, once we provide the housing, then we can surround them with the services that will be able to allow them to recover and enter, re-enter our, our communities. Now, what's most important about that is, you know, you have to have somewhere to put people if you want to push them off the streets. So that brings two issues, right? We can't just keep pushing our unhoused populations to neighboring communities, just like Miramasa doesn't want that from downtown San Diego. You know, San Marcos and Escondido doesn't want that from Miramasa. So we just need to deal with this issue and it's difficult. And anybody who pretends like it isn't, isn't taking it seriously. And then I said it was two issues. So, yes, so of course, people say, you know, law enforcement, right? We want our, our schools to be safe. We want our, our businesses to, to be welcoming to their customers. But if we're going to be, you know, doing these sweeps, we have a responsibility to make sure that there's somebody, somewhere for them to go.
Thank you. Brian?
Thank you. You know, the, you know, one of the things that I think that has come out good recently of all of the debate regarding homelessness is that it doesn't always have to be a police response. And I think that that is probably a, a change in the dynamic of how we're gonna address homelessness going forward. And I think it's a good change. And I think law enforcement welcomes that as well. When you have a situation that may not require police, but a social worker can go out there and deal with the situation, that is certainly a plus. I had a bill earlier in the year that has been shelved for now, but we're gonna give it a shot again next year that would have funded hot teams, homeless outreach teams, that would have provided a, a wraparound services team from the county, backed up by law enforcement. But the initial engagement would be by social worker professionals that can go in and, and do some triage on whether this is a drug addiction problem, a mental illness problem, or is it a, a financial problem that a family's, you know, ran, ran into some problems and they need some temporary help to get off the street. But regarding the, the drug addicted and the, the mental illness, that's a longer-term solution that we're gonna have to work together on. I have a bill on the Governor's desk right now dealing with the appointments on different commissions to have a person who has some experience with a mental disability to be represented on those committees so that they can have a voice at the table and help formulate the policies that are gonna be involved in this. Certainly, we need to work around Prop forty-seven and fifty-seven and AB one oh nine. There's been some law enforcement reforms there that I think have not been positive for the communities. And one of the things that we have to take, you know, really look at is California is twelve percent of the US population. Twelve percent of the US population, yet we have forty-seven percent of the US homeless people are here in California. And so that's one of two things. Either Californians are becoming at a higher rate homeless or we're attracting them from other states to come here. And so we need to have a, we need to look at that, those policies that's creating that. I don't have an answer for that right now. I'm just putting out the statistics for us to have a talk about. And, you know, we'll be debating those next year as we move forward. But certainly, you know, homelessness over the last ten years has increased. We've all seen it with our own eyes. Neighborhoods that never were impacted by that are being impacted by it now in a very negative way. And we have to find a compassionate way to respond to this. I endorsed a package of bills earlier in the year that was called the ACT package. It was accountability, compassion, and treatment. And I think we need all three of those to have a positive impact on the homelessness here in California. And I will keep advocating for those types of issues and policies when I get. On the homelessness here in California, and I will keep advocating for those types of issues and policies, uh, when I get back to Sacramento.
Thank you. Um, we have one more person who has not previously asked a question. And that's going to bring us up to the end of our time. So Sabrina?
Yeah, thank you, Barry. Um, glad to be able to join you guys this evening. I just had, um, a follow-up question. I know it was mentioned briefly about gun reform, but with gun violence becoming such a public health issue and such an epidemic. In this country, it is something that needs to be addressed and a serious issue. And just wanted to hear a little bit more about each, um, candidate's stance on gun reform. And what they see as steps forward, um, for addressing this issue. Thank you.
And Brian, we'll begin with you.
I know my opponent likes to point me out as, uh, uh, and, and coin me as a gun nut. But, uh, that's just not the case. Um, I, I'm a, uh, I'm a, uh, safe gun owner myself. As I'm sure many people on this call are as well. As a matter of fact, uh, a couple of years, I carried a gun reform bill. Uh, that, uh, actually passed the legislation was signed by the governor. And so I've got some experience in this. I think one of the things that gets lost in the dialogue and the debate on this many times. Is how many times, uh, firearms are used for pe- personal protection and safety. And as we see, uh, crime increase, uh, throughout the country. Uh, and we're seeing single moms having their, their homes invaded and use, being able to use a firearm to protect themselves and their kids. Uh, those, those are sometimes lost in the headlines. Um, and so I, I come to these debates. Uh, with a full conscience of what they mean. My family has been impacted by school violence. My brother-in-law was on campus at Santana High School in two thousand and one, uh, when a shooter came onto the campus with a twenty-two caliber rifle. And injured several people and killed several people as well. And so I take these, these issues very personal. And come at them with a very rational mindset on what's going to make sense. What law enforcement can actually do to impact this? And how can we keep firearms out of the hands of criminals? What a lot of Californians don't rec- realize is in, uh, early two thousand and twelve or thirteen. The legislature voted to give the attorney general at the time twenty-four million dollars to, for the APPS system. That's the, uh, um, prohibited persons list, firearms prohibited persons list. And the AG at the time took that money and then still, uh, twenty-four months later. We still had the same number of firearms illegally in possession by people that shouldn't have firearms in the first place. And so my advocacy is number one, public safety. Number two is to keep firearms out of criminals' hands and other people that shouldn't have them in the first place.
Thank you. Joseph?
Well, gun nut is certainly not my term. I've never used that. But, um, the NRA has rated the Senator with an A plus rating. So that's their term, um, and he is endorsed by them. So, um, I think those two things speak for themselves. Um, you know, the, one of the very first and rare times. That I specifically tweeted at the Senator, um, was when he had the nerve to wear an orange shirt. And talk about gum- common sense gun reform after failing to acknowledge the massacre and the hurt and the pain and evolving. Uh, as an NRA endorsed candidate, um, it's going to take a lot more than a T-shirt in what I assume was his backyard. He didn't bother to go to a rally. There are many throughout our district. He didn't bother to go to his office. Um, he put on an orange T-shirt and, uh, decided that he would take to social media. And I still get upset thinking about that. My grandfather was murdered, um, by a madman. Um, my grandfather was simply on his porch. Uh, my grandmother was taking a shower. They were going to have their evening supper and, um, my grandmother was the one to find him. We have to get ahead of criminals, um, saying that things haven't worked in the past or bad people are going to get guns anyways. Um, is as natural a dereliction of the Senator's duty. Um, there are ghost guns that are occurring currently in our communities. Um, this is, these are untraceable parts, um, that are sold illegally. Um, there is, uh, very little, uh, legislation that addresses it and allows individuals to put together guns. With parts that they get, untraceable parts that they get on the internet, um, to cause havoc and harm in our communities. Again, we heard gun safety a number of times and criminals and crime from the Senator, but he has had thirty, three zero. Opportunities to vote for common sense, which he says he stands for, common sense gun reform in his time in the legislature. And he has voted all thirty down. That's how you get an A plus rating from the NRA. So we have to get ahead of criminals, strengthen our background checks, um, and promote safety. Um, you'd be surprised that, well, naturally you wouldn't. I certainly am not. Um, veterans who are highly trained in their weapons, I being an expert in both my service pistol and my service rifle. Uh, both in the Navy and the Marine Corps, um, are strong proponents of gun safety. Um, you know, we had to learn how to, um, have these weapons, care for these weapons and keep people around us safe. Um, and there's absolutely no reason why a regular gun owner shouldn't want to do the same thing, right? To be able to, uh, keep their families safe. If we're talking about family members pulling out guns in haste and under threats. Um, then yes, uh, gun safety, uh, gun training, um, and background checks, ensuring that the right people have these weapons. Um, is it, I, I'll close on this and I, I love this. I never in my wildest dreams, as you know, I'm an attorney, never in my wildest dreams thought that I would be quoting, um, Justice Scalia. Justice Scalia is the author of, um, uh, of the case ruling. Um, that really gives teeth to the Second Amendment. He, but he specifically said. That the Second Amendment is a right to bear arms, but not a right to bear all kinds of arms in all kinds of places. Um, and I think that that's lost, um, and, uh, needs to be at the forefront of this conversation.
All right. We could carry this on for hours. There are a lot of questions. Um, we're unfortunately going to have to call and, and now so that we can all, uh, be in bed for a reasonable hour. Uh, Mr. Roha, Mr. Jones, thank you so much for being here tonight. It's a pleasure to meet both of you to. Be in one of your districts come November, and we look forward to seeing you after the election cycle. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on back to government and community resources. We are going to have our open forum session. So if you have something to ask about, to talk about. You can have two minutes in an open forum session. I ask that you please direct message me in the chat. And I will go down the list and call on each of you. All right, we've gone through community planning group. We're going to move now to the community recreation group, Joe Frickdell.
Yeah, I want to, uh, mention one more thing. Mira Mesa, since it's been built, has always been park deficient. And the, the current master plan for our community, the new community plan update. Has us listed as a minus three thousand plus as far as park goes for our current population. They expect the population to double. And you would think that planning would help. But because they're doubling the population, they're also doubling our park deficiency. So by putting twice as many people in Mira Mesa, we're having twice as many loss of acres. So there's nothing to support all these people that are going to be put in. We're short of parkland right now. If it wasn't for Miramar College, uh, we would be up a creek. And we wouldn't even know what a paddle looks like. Uh, the other good news is Wagenheim seems to be on schedule. Uh, I can't get any information right now. Uh, they, they haven't returned my messages this month. But, uh, it does seem to be on schedule. So hopefully, uh, Wagenheim will be done. And, uh. The, the rain we just had helped a little bit, but definitely not enough. But, but, uh, like everybody knows, San Diego is water sufficient. We have plenty of water for doing everything. It's just, uh, we want to make sure that the state doesn't come in here and take our water. Please respect our parks. Clean up after your dog. Um, don't throw trash out there. The city just did a study and they found out that Mira Mesa is one of the four places where we, the street sweepers pick up more trash. Then, then places like Pacific Beach. So I, I don't understand that, uh, how, how we can be so. Dirty out there and throw crap all over the place. But, you know, pick stuff up out in the street. Keep our community clean. Everybody that lives here, uh, we've got to help each other. So peace out and stay safe. We love our parks. Bye.
Thank you, Joe. All right. From the Mira Mesa Branch Library, Anna Gibson. And I saw Anna come in. I guess not.
She was here, but I don't see her now.
All right, I'll keep an eye out. We can come back to her. All right, next, uh, Miramar College, Wesley Lundberg.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Hope you're doing well. Um, things are, uh, rolling along out at the college. As you may know, we have, we're fully reopened now. Um, that said, about half of our courses are still online. That is by the demand of the students. Meaning, uh, like a marketplace kind of demand, um, not that they're protesting and marching across campus or anything like that. Um, but we're, we're, we're determined to meet students where they are. And so I'm predicting that that's about where we'll be. Uh, we may see some more face-to-face things. The interesting thing though, that you might, you might want to know is that students. Though they're looking for more online options, that's not one hundred percent of what they want. They want to be able to choose. Uh, some of their classes to be online and they want one hundred percent of the resources and, and service, uh, oriented offices on campus and ready for them. So, uh, so as you can imagine, that's quite a, 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 a challenge to meet. So we're determined to do that. On a very positive note, uh, we are up ten percent in our, uh, full-time equivalency of students for this fall. That's measured fall to fall, by the way. So if you look at pre-pandemic, we're still down quite a bit. Um, so we have a long way to go, but it's, it's very positive to see that, that we're there. I think we're the highest increase fall to fall, uh, of all the community colleges in the, in the Sadi- Sadiqah region. Meaning Imperial Valley and, and San Diego counties. So, um, Miramar's, Miramar's strong. We're looking very good. Um, I wanted to just mention too, since, uh, since the parks were, were mentioned and, and thank you, Joe. For mentioning Hourglass Field and, and the college's contribution to the parkland space. I, I, I get a lot of questions on the Vernal Pools. You may not know what those are. If you drive by, um, Hillary Drive and Black Mountain Road, um, a lot of folks look at that large chunk of what looks like wasteland. There on the corner and, uh, and say, hey, why can't you build there? Can we have baseball fields or whatever? Uh, answer is no, that's some of the only remaining wetlands in the Mira Mesa area. Uh, it doesn't look very wet. But they're Vernal Pools. So when we have rain, there's a, a, a veritable explosion of wildlife in there. So, um, but I would like to let you know too, that that is a space that's open to the public. There's some nice trails and some interpretive signage through there. Um, and it's very educational. It is also used for research as well as educational, uh, um, educational, uh. Uh, what functions for the college and our classes. So just in case you're interested and maybe you can help me spread the word. Uh, that's off limits, that space. Uh, you'd be surprised how often I hear that. And Joe, I'm sure you hear that as well. He serves on the, uh, the Joint Use Committee. So, um, we're determined to protect that space. I wanted to mention too, that, uh, I think you know already, I don't see Rob, um, Knutson here. But, uh, he, uh, he's from Brian Mainchain's office, of course. Um, and we secured two point five million dollars for a Veterans Resource Center for, through his efforts. That was part of the educational, um, bill. It was, is on the trailer bill for that. Um, that's a huge chunk of change, as you can imagine. We had already, I'm myself, I'm a vet, uh, very passionate about serving vet students. Um, and, and helping them along. And of course, since we're adjacent to MCAS Miramar, it only makes sense. But, uh, many of you may not know that twenty percent of our student population is military affiliated. So it only makes sense that we move in this direction and that's exactly what we're doing. And thank you to, to Brian Mainchain's office and, and making that possible. Um, that is going to expand our service to the air station, by the way. Uh, we've been limited by internet service. Um, we cannot use their internet service for security reasons, as you can imagine. That makes it incumbent on us to lay out that, that, uh, infrastructure from the street into the facility. Um, and that's to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars. So that funding is also going to provide that. But some trickle down is that we're also looking at, um, building out a multicultural center. Uh, this will be a, over the next year or two. We, we haven't had that. We haven't had the luxury of that. So, um, it should not be a luxury. It should be something that we just do. And that's what, that's what we're moving towards. So I wanted to let you know that as well. I also wanted to let you know that in connection to the space that we're looking at, I'm referring specifically to for the Veterans Center. As well as the future multicultural center, we're talking about the English building, uh, in the lower floor and the second floor. That over, there, there's a huge room that overlooks Hourglass, uh, not Hourglass, excuse me, uh, Compass Point. It's a beautiful location in, in the, in the campus, but we have a big lecture hall down on the first floor there that we cannot use. For, uh, a lot of functions because it's a sloped classic, uh, lecture hall. Um, that we're looking at opening up to the community more and more. So I thought this town council would be very interested in knowing that. Uh, it's a, it's a lecture hall that, that can seat, I think eighty-some people. Um, so that might be something that you want to think about and, and, uh, if the town council is interested in using that anytime immediately, let me know. And we'll, uh, we'll pave the way for that. So, um, let's see, what else do I have? Are, just some reminders, Equity Summit, uh, you'll recall that we started that last year. Um, it does have a function serving the college, but we've, we've, uh, built in Thursday evening. It's a Thursday, Friday thing, but Thursday evening is intended to be a, uh, an event open to the public. Um, uh, in the form of a lecture. So person is not, has not been determined yet. Uh, for the speaker, I'll keep you posted on that, but please mark your calendar. That would be, uh, Thursday, October twenty-seventh. Uh, in the evening, ensure to be a good, um, a good lecturer, get you on campus too. So, so there's that. Our fundraisers are fundraiser is October second. You heard Bernie, uh, Reinerson, the trustee from this area. Um, and myself mentioned that last time and, um, my offer for two seats, uh, at the fundraiser, raiser still stands. So if there's any takers, let me know. I'll pay for that out of my own pocket, uh, just to have you, have you there and be a part of that, that event. That'll be at Valley High on October second, Sunday, uh, from four to seven o'clock. Um, gonna be a great event. And so there's that. I gave you the enrollment report and I told you about the, uh, the Vernal Pools. I think that's my report. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any, if we have time. Um, Barry, I'm not sure.
We do. Are there any questions? Okay.
Well, thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to be here.
See, I see a hand up. Matthew, did you have a question?
All right, uh, regarding renovation changes to Miramar College in the area. Is there any planned change to reservations to the, uh, police, off-the-train courses and all of that you have there for people trying to get into that profession?
For the, I'm sorry, I, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
I'm sorry. Um, I know Miramar College is on to a lot of the, uh, physical testing for academy hopefuls for police.
Oh, yes.
Change where that's located. I know it's kind of.
Not looking at relocating. It's a really good facility. Thank you for.
Amen to that.
Will give us, uh, plugs. No. And, uh, for all the talking, uh, of defunding and things like that, that's, I don't see that happening. Uh, even with our district police, uh, that's not the direction things are going. So, um, you know, uh, 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 re- reformation. Perhaps of police procedures, yes, our district police have already, are already implementing that. They're, they're going to be using tasers as a way of de-escalating, uh, gives them a place in between, you know, physical force and guns. Um, and our officers are armed, uh, by the way. So, um, but to answer your question too, we do have the fire academy. I'm always going to grab a chance to make a plug. Uh, another great facility. We're not going to, that's not going anywhere. And the EMT and, and lifeguard things, you know, I've said this before. But, uh, I joke with my family, just about every time we see a firefighter, a lifeguard or a police officer, I say, Miramar graduate.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. Uh, that obstacle course that you have there is perfect. And that's what I use to train at least once a month, just to make sure same fit for it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, um, Mira Mesa High School, Jennifer is not with us tonight. Scoops me some fireworks. Um, I don't see Michael Spencer. Do, Pam, do you have a report from him or would wait till next month? Muted. You're muted, Pam.
Now, now I'm unmuted, right?
Yes.
Barry, uh, I was, uh, maybe not the right spot on the agenda, but sort of goes together. I know there was at least one meeting. I know there was at least one meeting of Miramesa Town Council's reorganizing Fourth of July committee. And do you have a report about that to share with us?
Yeah, I can give a quick report. As everybody knows, we've had everything canceled the past couple of years. Our fireworks show this year, there may be some changes, including the location. Knowing that a lot of that is still being decided. We, of course, have to get a lot of permitting out of the way early. So a decision was made from the newly forming committee that we're going to return to our traditional location. We will hold the parade and fun day on Miramesa Boulevard and at the community park. And that once we know the the form that the fireworks show will be taking this year, we will adapt around that. But we're now going to have to do a lot of work on getting funding. Because during COVID, a lot of the grants that we used to rely on have changed how they award their funds, which could cause up to a nine-month delay in being reimbursed. And given that this event is at about $35,000 to $36,000, not counting the fireworks because of all the cost of closing Miramesa Boulevard. We're going to be looking to the community to help us with ideas and fundraising and to point out companies that might want to do sponsorships. So the show will go on. We are looking for funds. We are looking for help. You'll start seeing a lot more information coming out this month. The committee will be meeting again in about a week and a half. And from there, you're going to see a lot of information, but that is our goal this year, to bring back the show, to bring it back to the traditional location, to bring back the parade, to bring it back to the traditional route. And then moving forward, once the fireworks show for the future is fully specked out, we'll see if there are any changes. All right. Thanks, Pam. Moving on, San Diego Unified School District, Sabrina Bazo.
Thanks again, Barry. Good evening, everyone. I'm I'm heading into my first school board meeting for this coming year is going to be tomorrow. So I don't have a lot to report right at the present, but I know there's a lot going on in getting the schools started. They've been in session now for, I think, about two weeks. And enrollment numbers I've received via email have actually been quite good, especially compared to some other districts in the state that have had declining numbers. So that's always great to see. One of the areas that we, that's been very successful this year is the Universal TK program that has, it was initially started as kind of a smaller scale last year, but this year, I believe every school in the district, every elementary school has a has a UTK class and, and some more than, than just one. And we've had amazing success with the program. And the nice thing about that program too is then, then that feeds the students into the public school, starting in preschool, that they're getting that taste of school, getting comfortable with the school and helping to strengthen our community schools and our public schools, which are already amazing, but just is helping to maintain and increase the, that, those enrollment numbers for us. And one other thing I was going to add is that I don't know if some of you probably remember me talking about the tutoring program we started during COVID and where we had high school students working with students. This is when we were all, you know, locked down in virtual, working with them on Zoom. I've been meeting with the specifically with the principal at Hickman. Actually, she's not the principal there anymore. Toby, she just got moved to another position promoted. So I'm sad to lose her to Hickman, but I know she's going to still do amazing things for the district. Yeah, I know. Yeah, that was a surprise. She is going to be working for the district. I can't remember. It's like extended learning opportunities, I think, is her title. So, yeah, so we're going to be looking for a new principal there. But yeah, so I love Toby. She's great. But we started a program with her and at the high school where we're going to have the students coming in either before or after school or, or, well, they're going to be coming in during the school day. We're not sure, like maybe on late, where the high school starts later days, and the students will be coming in to work with the students at the elementary level. And there's even possibly going to be opportunities to pay those students, which is going to be amazing. So we're really excited about strengthening and growing that and also getting that out to other elementary schools to increase our teacher pipeline, because one of the things we're working on is having more students from our community come back and work at San Diego Unified and become teachers in the neighborhoods where they went to school. So our students are seeing their teachers that look like them or from their same communities. Really trying to strengthen that that program. So I'm excited that we're, we're moving that kind of ahead here in Miramesa as kind of a pilot for the district to see what that looks like.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Oh, always good news with the schools. Next up, let's see, San Diego Community College District Board Member Bernie Reinerson. I don't believe I see him logged in. So we'll move on. City Councilmember Chris Kate is Denise here.
Here, present. Good evening, everyone. A few things. I received a, an update for a traffic service request, a proposed stop sign on Scorpius Way and Taurus Place. So the city engineer evaluated the area and the intersection met the criteria to install a stop sign along Scorpius Way facing northbound traffic. So if you have comments or concerns regarding this, please email me within, within 30 days from today. If there are no comments, the city crew will proceed with the installation of the said stop sign along Scorpius Way. And if you would like to submit a traffic service request yourself, I will send the link with my report later on. It's just easily, like, once it clicks, you can see the online form and you can submit any type of traffic service request for Miramesa area. And then second, regarding trash and litter along Kearney Villa Road and Miramar Road, we received a lot of complaints regarding trash along the area. So the city's contractor will abate the subject areas for the week of September 12th, so this week, ahead of the MCAS Miramar Airshow. And the scope will include clearing shoulders, medians, ramps and litter pickup associated with the vegetation abatement along Miramar Road and Kearney Villa Road. The limits of the abatement will encompass Kearney Villa Road from Miramar Road to Highway 52 and Miramar Road from Highway 805 to Highway 15. And then budget priorities are coming up. Councilmember Kate and the office are reviewing the budget memo priorities for District Six. So if you have any additional requests that you would like to, to be added on the memo, please send me an email on what the add or request will be. Also, our office will be sending out a community survey soon. And once it's available, I'll be sending out the survey link to the community leaders to share. And also invite everyone to participate in the, in answering the survey. I will also attach the PDF link for the submit, submitted budget priority memo. You can review what are on the list. And if you see something like, oh, there's a new pothole at this street and it's not on the list, feel free to email me and I will put it on the, on the memo. And the next council member Kate's final state of the district event will take place on Tuesday, October 4th. Doors open at 5:30 PM. And the program begins at 6:00 PM. There will be light refreshments served and the location will be at Hanger 858. I haven't been here, but if you're familiar with the place, that's where it will be. It's, it's at 3760 Glenn H. Curtis Road. Please RSVP before September 26th, Monday, to reserve your seat. There's also a link for an event right dot com. I will also include that in my report. And lastly, our office has been receiving a lot of water utility issues in the past couple of months. So if you are experiencing long hold times or phone line hanging up after a long wait when calling Public Utilities Customer Service due to a water utility issue, please feel free to email me and I can assist you with your wat- water utility concern. So information that I usually need to follow up would be a account number, if it's available. Second is the account holder's complete name. Next is the address location of where the issue is occurring. Next is contact number and email address for updates. And of course, issue or concern, like, is it a service start or shut off that you need? Or is it a possible misreading of your water meter that increased your billing this month or this week? So yeah, I will also post my email and thank you for your time. That's it from me.
Thank you, Denise. All right, moving on. Assemblyman Mainchon, Rob Newsen, I do not see him signed in. Mayor Todd Gloria's office, Michaela Volk. Don't believe she's with us tonight either. Okay. County Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer, I received a note from Amanda that she won't be able to be here tonight. State Senator Tony Atkins, Diana Lara.
No, it hurts.
Okay. Congressman Scott Peters, Priscilla Wang. She sent me her notes. She's not able to be here tonight. I'll just run over these really quickly and we can print these along with the minutes. Some updates from Washington. Slashing prescription drug costs. Medicare will be empowered to negotiate the price of prescription drugs. Lowering the cost of healthcare, reducing the cost of healthcare by extending ACA enhanced subsidies. Lowering energy costs and delivering largest ever climate action. Investing in domestic energy production, reducing carbon emissions. These are all items that were passed as part of the Inflation Reduction Act. Updates from San Diego. Congressman Peters attended a ceremony marking committed collaboration between the US and Mexico to address the two countries' shared environmental crisis. On September 6th, Representative Peters and Representative Sarah Jacobs hosted a virtual town hall on the monkeypox outbreak. On September 7th, Congressman Peters welcomed Small Business Administration Administrator Isabel Guzman to San Diego for a roundtable discussion, hearing about challenges during COVID. And lastly, if you have any questions, comments or concerns for Congressman Peters, please contact their office and they'll be glad to help. So we will put the entire document in the minutes. That's it for elected officials on open forum. I have a couple of names. The first person is Maxwell Hoffman, and you have two minutes.
Hello. So good evening to the Miramesa Town Council. My name is Max and I'm speaking tonight because our city of San Diego faces a crisis that you can help solve. The Center for Policing Equity found that our fellow San Diegans face disproportionate dangers on the streets they pay for and from those they pay to keep them and their families safe. Policing bias stemming from racial and ethnic discrimination is endemic in our communities. With our known neighbors stopped and searched three and a half times more if they're African-American and two and a half times more if Latino. This status quo is unacceptable to the people of our city. And SDPD is not only violating the rights of my neighbors, but their unjust searches and detentions discredit law enforcement and critically weaken the relationship between the people and their governments. Actions to address biased policing should match the magnitude of the problem. And we, the people, need your work to restore our faith and the officers sworn to protect us. CPAT and other community stakeholders have been advocating for the city to adopt Protect Ordinance, which would solve this epidemic of injustice and distrust. By requiring officers to obtain probable cause before they're granted the power to conduct stops and searches as our constitution intended. We need your help to make the city of San Diego one that reflects our nation's ideals of liberty and equality under the law. And we, the people, call upon you and this council to aid in this separate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Kai Guzman.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Kai. My pronouns are they/them. Kind of to piggyback on, on what Maxwell just said, multiple studies have shown us that our San Diego Police Department unfortunately does not live up to our shared values of racial equity, dignity and respect. Internal data that was collected from SDPD actually proved that there is a different standard of policing for black people or Latinos, Asian Pacific Islanders, as compared to white people, as well as disproportionate stops for people with disabilities and people who are part of the LGBT community. So this is deeply troubling. I'm going to share one example. In 2021, this last year, the Center for Policing Equity Analysis that was commissioned by our very own San Diego Police Department found that black people experienced non-traffic stops 3.5 times more often than white people. And were subjected to force by SDPD five times as often as white people. SDPD was also found to have stopped Pacific Islanders at a 126% higher rate than white people. That's really alarming, given the makeup of our community here in Miramesa. Black people represent 6% of the population, yet made up 12% of SDPD's traffic stops for registration violation stops alone. So these, these disparities again are really important for us to highlight when we look at this data. As a local, this data is really alarming for me. I want to know that when I drive to a trail in the morning for, for a morning run, that I'm not at risk of being stopped simply because of the color of my skin. Or when I'm door knocking and reminding my neighbors to vote, as is our patriotic duty, that I'm not called on the police and could potentially be at risk in, in a situation. And I just think we're, we're past that now and we shouldn't be past that. Police officers have important work to do and to actually keep our community safe. And we should all support measures to help our officers from lowering these alarming stop rates so that it's not seen as a solely, as a problem solely because of that, right? Or it's on them. It's actually on all of us and all of us have the power to change what's happening. So we need these actual laws that address these racial disparities and eliminate these types of policing practices that cause harm on black people and communities of color as well. So CPAT would love your support with the Protect Ordinance. If this sounds like something that you'd like support, you can sign our protect petition that I'm going to go ahead and drop on the link. And if you would like to be added to the mailing list to learn more, I'll also drop those things on the chat that your support would be greatly appreciated. And thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next up, Tommy Howe.
Thank you, Barry. I appreciate it. Great to see everyone. Tommy Howe, running for San Diego City Council here in, in District Six and Miramesa in the heart of San Diego. It's good to see everyone. I said a couple of items I wanted to mention real quickly, but I, it was great to hear from Denise about the new stop sign at Scorpius Way and, and Taurus. That's really great news. You know, one of the things we hear a lot from our neighbors going door to door, especially on a lot of the long straightaway roads is I'm almost always asked about, you know, speed bumps. And obviously, that's not as easy to, to do. You need, typically need to have some sort of petition to go and do that. But oftentimes, stop signs might be an easier way to calm traffic on some of those long straightaways. I think we, we found that to be the case on, on Flanders a few years ago. Regardless, I spoke with NBC San Diego today with Politically Speaking over at Sandberg Park about my campaign. One of the issues I raised was the concern we have that, you know, as, as Joe was saying earlier, we're really having this enormous projection of, of, of new neighbors coming into our community. And yet we simply do not have the park space for it. And with the new Parks Master Plan, where we got rid of the entire dynamic of amount of acres per 1,000 people, that's going to be a real concern if we really are going to be adding 42% more people in the neighborhood of San Diego. We need to make sure we have our ballfields. We need to make sure we have parks. And right now, developers have no incentivization, especially now that we had our developer impact fees taken away to go and build a park of appropriate size, especially when Stone Creek winds up being built. That's a big, big concern. We need to be very much aware of that here in Miramesa. I would also say that I recently received the endorsement of Moms Demand Action in addition to San Diegans for gun violence prevention. I was, I was very honored and humbled to receive the endorsement of both those sensible gun ordinance organizations. As far as the Miramesa Community Plan Update goes, and I apologize, I don't mean to be pole vaulting over my time here, but that's been a big concern with neighbors right now. We've heard a lot of concern about the increase in population, potentially taking lanes full-time away from Miramesa Boulevard. I think if you want to do dayparted with some of the, with a bus lane on Miramesa Boulevard, that makes sense. Going inbound and outbound during different types of the day, but I'm not so sure it's a good idea to take it entirely away. And replacing all of that with this Jules Verne design aerial gondola, in my opinion, means the city is skipping us once again and doing the very basics of restoring our infrastructure, maintaining our roads and taking care of our parks. That's the biggest concern that we're certainly hearing from, from our neighbors. And I, I think that really does it for the concerns I have, other than as far as the difference between, you know, perhaps myself and my opponent, look at what's happening right now with the sports arena site, with the, the amount of money that was given to the mayor's campaign and that developer is now moving forward with that. Uh, with the, uh, the amount of money that was given to the mayor's campaign and that developer is now moving forward with that. Uh, eighty-six million dollars thrown into the fireplace on Ash Street. I certainly represent a different type of leader for the city of San Diego. And I'll bring that responsibility to San Diego City Council. I appreciate your time. My name's Tommy Howe. Website is tommyhowe.com. Thank you so much, Barry.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Kent Lee.
Evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm gonna make this quick just because I am reading to my daughter to put her bed. Especially since, since the meeting has been running a little bit later. But, uh, my name is Kent Lee, running for San Diego City Council, uh, in the sixth district. Um, as many of you might know, I actually serve as a member of the Mira Mesa Community Planning Group. Uh, wife and I have been here for the last fifteen years, um, raising the two and a four-year-old. Um, but yeah, I, you know, wanted to take a moment just to again reiterate myself. I'll put some info in the chat. Look forward to seeing neighbors at the Mira Mesa Street Fair. Um, obviously, like in a lot of our conversations and, and many of the ones that you saw addressed in the forum tonight, uh, even with our state senate candidates. I mean, we, we clearly understand that some of the biggest issues we're facing, not just in Mira Mesa, but across the city, um, happen to deal with things like homelessness. Uh, just knowing that there's a lot of responsibility and, um, in terms of how the city responds, uh, not just in itself, but also with our counterparts of the county and more. Um, housing affordability, knowing that everything that we've been building for quite a chunk of time is not meeting a lot of the middle income demand that our firefighters or teachers or nurses, you know, everyday San Diegans need, uh, to actually be able to live and stay here in San Diego. Um, and then ultimately our infrastructure, and it's not just about potholes and streets, but really thinking about how we're going to um, resolve some of the biggest challenges with our city's budget and our staffing. To ensure that we can do the little things like fixing streets and, uh, potholes and our streetlights, which tend to fall uh, way behind in terms of our city's infrastructure. Um, so yeah, I will leave my info in the chat. Thanks for entertaining, uh, both of us for a moment. And, uh, nice to see all of you and hope to connect with the street fair ahead. Thanks.
All right, that's the end of our open forum session. Uh, some committee reports, Treasurer Jonathan Lee.
Uh, hello, hopefully you can hear me. Uh, so, uh, we've currently, we've received about fourteen thousand for street fair. Our deposits, about twelve hundred for memberships, or up to eighty-one thousand dollars uh, at the end of, uh, end of, uh, August. And so hopefully we have enough to fund our, our street fair. Coming up. And that's about it for now.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, street fair, Jeff?
Okay, so it's, um, almost on us. The Mira Mesa Street Fair is Saturday, October first. That's two weeks from Saturday. Should be a great event. Um, we're working hard to prepare for it. We've got ninety vendors signed up so far. We have acts on both stages going on all day long. There are inflatables and pony rides for kids, a solar telescope to make good use of the sun that we sometimes have too much of. So should be a good day. Please come and encourage everyone that you know to come.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Pam, did you wanna give a very brief update? Uh, I know planning is going on for Volunteer of the Year.
Yes, uh, as some of you remember, in the spring of twenty twenty, when we had plans for a Volunteer of the Year dinner, honoring Jennifer Qualvic, who was selected in December nineteen, twenty nineteen as Volunteer of the Year. Our tradition that town council has done every year. And we hold an awards, hold, hold a ceremony at dinner and, uh, honor the wonderful volunteer and also take donations to the scholarship fund in honor of that year's honoree. So it helps encourage graduating high school seniors to, uh, be involved in community service too. So all of that came to a screeching halt with the pandemic. It's possible now to go ahead and belatedly honor Jennifer Qualvic, volunteer extraordinaire for having been twenty nineteen Volunteer of the Year. Maria Panko and I had a meeting to try to plan something. We had set a tentative date of Saturday, October twenty-second. We've heard, that's not a cast in stone thing right at the moment, but you will, you will hear more soon. Or actually, that's, that's the date we've been talking about exactly what we're doing. We haven't totally locked down and Jennifer's out of town tonight, but, uh, we'll be talking with her as soon as she gets back. And stay tuned for more information. It's a wonderful tradition that, uh, we want to get restarted.
Thanks Pam. Um, I think Yvonne had to leave us. Um, so we will defer our membership report till next meeting. And Joe, you're gonna take us out for the night. You'll be our last person. You have some comments.
Yeah, I just wondered because I've been having problems where the, the meeting has gone away and come back. Maybe we should change our meetings because we're supposed to conserve energy between four and nine. And that's right when we're having our meetings. So is this getting that bad where we can't have meetings? Uh, good night, everybody.
Uh, Joe, actually Barry, do we want to end with tentative plans for the October third Mira Mesa Town Council meeting? Because
Absolutely.
We put that on the agenda and it's in, I think it's in the newsletter that's posted on the website, although probably not a lot of info. We do want to do our traditional schools night on Monday, October third. And that meeting tentatively will be an in-person meeting in the Mira Mesa Library Community Meeting Room. Uh, so stay tuned for more information about that also. That will be the Monday after our street fair weekend. So uh, if you're not completely sure what's happening, we'll have information at the town council booth about that. But well, we hope to get the meeting notice out a little bit earlier before that meeting than we did before this one.
Excellent. Thanks Pam. And we are hoping that finally we are through with COVID. We are through with heatwaves. We are through with tropical storms wandering our way. And we'll be back to in-person for the schools meeting in October. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We appreciate you being here, taking your time to be a part of this community. And we look forward to seeing you at street fair and then at our October meeting. Good night.
Yeah, Barry.
Good night.
Night all.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.